Hello. Good evening, everyone. Observing a quorum present, I'm going to call the Town of Dyton's Special Town Meeting to order. It is Thursday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is seven oh two P. M. First and foremost, thank you all for coming. As we go through the articles tonight, if anyone wishes to get up and speak under discussion on any warrant article, I do ask that you come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record before entering into discussion. If you're unable to make it up to the microphone, please keep your hand raised, and we will have someone bring a microphone to you. If everyone could please stand, if you're able to, for the Pledge of Allegiance. Reports from town officials to five minutes. That being said, Article One.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we dispense with the reading of the warrant.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Let's hear the town.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we dispense with the reading of the articles and that reference to them be made by number and content.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town consider adjournment this evening at ten o'clock P. M.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we hear reports of the town officials.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
On behalf of my two colleagues, Nicole Mello and Mark Machiko, and myself, good evening and welcome. The last six months have been relatively quiet. However, we do have a new town administrator, Ralph Vataco. Hi, Ralph. We must remain diligent as we confront ongoing issues that require our collective focus and action. We recently had a dead exclusion vote that did not pass. This revolt, this vote will result in some aggressive budget cuts for the next fiscal year. It is of most importance that we work together to devise solutions that serve the interests of all residents. Tonight presents an opportunity for each of you to express your thoughts, ideas, and concerns. Your ideas are crucial, and your voice deserves to be heard. In conclusion, together we can navigate complexities that lie ahead. We can forge a brighter future for our town. Thank you for your commitment, your passion, and progress, your progress, to your readiness to engage in these essential conversations. Thank you.
Do we have any other reports from town officials?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the reports of the town officials.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed?
Could you please extend the use of the microphone? You can't hear.
Sure.
Will do. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the amount of seventeen hundred and fifty-eight dollars to pay prior year bills.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? This will require a nine tenths vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one hundred and six thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-six cents to be expended by the fire chief as the fourth payment of a seven-year lease purchase of a new fire engine and any necessary accessories.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Hi, my name is Joanne Peterson, thirty ninety-one Hunters Hill Drive. I have a question in regard to this. You're asking the voters to vote on a hundred and six thousand dollars to pay for a lease. Can you tell me why this doesn't appear in the budget anywhere? Or if it's in the budget, what line item is it?
So, we keep capital expenditures outside of the operating budget, and capital expenditures are usually paid for through cash or under other funding sources. If we were to leave it in the operating budget, it would automatically go to raise and appropriate on the taxes. So anything that's over fifty thousand a capital expenditure, we tend to keep it outside of the budget because those used to, you know, just one-time things, or, you know, this lease just happens to be a few years out.
Okay, well, this is for a seven-year lease, and it's a payment for the year. I find it very strange that nowhere in the budget does it talk about the payments to these leases. And in your own budget, you know you're going to have to pay taxes of, let's say, eight thousand dollars a year. Don't you put that into your budget? This gives me a very false sense of security because it's not just this item, it's many items. That it should appear somewhere, and we should not have to vote once we voted on the budget. It should be there somewhere.
So the past practice of the town is to have the capital expenditures outside of the operating budget?
Okay, so if there's not a lot of free cash, how do we make these payments?
We would have to find a different funding source.
Such as?
Stabilization fund is one.
I just think that the taxpayers deserve to know that we are expending, spending money, but it doesn't appear anywhere. And that every year, we're going to have to come up and pass this line item where we're obligated now to pay it.
We'll take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you very much.
Nancy Gulat, six thirty-one Gray Terrace, North Dyton. As I recall, this was a special warrant article. When we approved the special warrant article, it included the lease payment and the terms. The commitment was made when that article was accepted years ago. I believe I was a selectman at the time. So once the original article is approved, and it's a lease purchase, you have to make the rest of the payments. When you vote to approve the article, you improve the method of funding, which in this case is a ten-year lease. Nothing is being hidden. Obviously, we have to come up with the money for the payment. We have a few more of these that we had to purchase that way because we didn't have the cash to buy them outright. But again, the original articles were approved by the voters. So this is a commitment that was made years ago. Thank you.
Just to provide clarification, this is the fourth payment of a seven-year lease. Is there a Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee recommendation on Article Three?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Finance Committee recommends.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to transfer from the ambulance fund the amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and six cents to be expended by the fire chief as the second payment of a three-year lease purchase of a new ambulance. Finance Committee recommends.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Pass. There is one. We do recommend it.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article Five.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of thirty-one thousand, ninety-four dollars and twenty-nine cents to be expended by the highway superintendent as a second-year payment of a four-year lease purchase of an excavator and any necessary accessories. Finance Committee recommends.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article Six.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer one million, fifty thousand dollars from the Town of Dyton Capital Stabilization Fund to be combined with the appropriation of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars previously made under Article thirty-two of the June seventh, two thousand and twenty-two annual town meeting for the purpose of paying the costs of conducting a feasibility study to identify current deficiencies, forecast future growth, and propose construction options that meet current and future needs at Dyton Elementary School, twelve hundred and fifty Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Mass., oh two seven one five, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for which the town may be eligible, eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Said amount to be expended under the direction of the Dyton Elementary School Building Committee. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any costs the town incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town. Finance Committee recommends one point two million.
Board of Selectmen recommends one point two million.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? I think we'd all agree that we've had some pretty tough times with inflation. Mr. White, can you just state your name and address for that?
My name is Doug White, four fifty-five Forest Street.
Thank you.
And as a financial consultant, I've looked at this, and I've had some, you know, questions on of my own. As we sit down in our own homes and we make our budgets, we have our needs, we have our wants, we have our desires, and this kind of falls between a need and a want. With the things that we have coming up as a town, and the monies that we're going to be expending this budget and the next budget, I think that we need to explore some other options. Maybe look into what we can do with existing space, what we can do alternatively. But I don't, you know, feel comfortable with the one point two million dollars that's being recommended for a feasibility study. Just wanted to have my opinion out there. I know that times are tough. I know we've got some bills coming up, and I think it's a consideration we should consider of looking into some other alternatives, whether it's space within the high school, space within the middle school, or space within the elementary school. Thank you.
Leonard Hall, seven sixty Main Street, Dyton. At this time, Mr. Moderator, I would like to make a motion to allow a non-Dyton resident, Superintendent Bill Rooney, to address the group.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any just?
Mr. Moderator, point of order. Statutorum of Superintendent Schools doesn't have to get special permission recognition. It's allowed under the law. He doesn't, you don't have to vote on it. You, Mr. Moderator, can allow him to speak.
I'll allow it. Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Mr. Rooney?
Mr. Moderator, is it okay if I face the crowd?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Bill Rooney, Superintendent of Schools. I do want to be respectful of the five minutes, so just bear with me as this will be a little bit of a lightning round. I want to start off by expressing some thank yous. Thank you to the residents who turned out tonight on this important issue. No matter where you stand, I think it's great that you're coming out and allowing democracy to take place. I want to thank the selectmen, the FinCom, and the school committee who have counseled us along the way. The school building committee has done an excellent job, volunteers giving a lot of their time, effort, and energy for this. I want to thank Mr. Vataco, the town hall team, as well as election officials for making tonight a reality. I want to thank the Dyton PTO for helping us to publicize tonight's town meeting. I want to thank my central office team, who's helped with communications and also technology. And I want to thank Champions Childcare for donating their time tonight for some childcare for some of our families with younger children. These are our school building committee members. In the interest of time, I'm not going to list all their names, but I am very grateful for their time, effort, and energy. So what is the MSBA? As the warrant article has already made mention, it is a competitive grant program, and through that competitive grant program, if a feasibility study is approved, the feasibility will discuss extensive repairs, renovations, school construction, or additions. The MSBA makes these decisions based on need and urgency. So MSBA experts saw our deficiencies and deemed them urgent, and this completely debunks the myth about this being an issue of upkeep. And I'm sorry to be so passionate about this, but that's offensive that we have not kept the building up. The building is seventy-some-odd years old. Our statement of interest was approved in December of two thousand and twenty-three, and I think it's relevant to know that three out of ten districts were selected, nineteen out of sixty-three. So this is a very competitive grant program, and we were selected based on need and urgency. What this is not, this is not the start of new construction. This is not the start of design. This is not the start of some multi-million-dollar construction project. Right now, we don't even have an estimate of what the construction cost would be, what renovation costs would be, et cetera, et cetera. These are just the priorities that the statement of interest signified to the MSBA in terms of making their decision about whether or not our needs were urgent. Our enrollment projections are what are, are one of our biggest concerns. So our projected enrollment going through FY thirty-one takes us from four ninety-three to about five hundred and thirty. The MSBA capacity without modulators is four hundred. The MSBA capacity with our current modulators is four sixty-eight. So next year, we're projected to be twenty-five students more than what the MSBA considers to be acceptable. History of the building, originally constructed in nineteen fifty-three, approximately fifty thousand square feet. In nineteen ninety-nine, some additions were made. In two thousand and eighteen, the town made the decision to bring the modular classrooms in as a temporary measure to address overcrowding. Those modulators are now in their sixth year of what was a five-year temporary plan. As I mentioned before, our team does a tremendous job of working to maintain and upkeep the building. These, you'll hear from other members of the school building committee, this is well beyond maintenance and upkeep. Summary of priorities, the building is not as safe as it needs to be. It does not have the handicap accessibility that it needs to have. It is not a twenty-first century learning environment. Our kids deserve better, and our staff deserves better. We do not have modern technology. The Dyton PTO has done a great job of donating some technology to us, but when you only have two outlets in a classroom, there's only so much that you can even plug in in terms of modern technology. And we would like a full range of programming where our kids can have theater, our kids could have a stage to perform on, and so on. The egress and parking issues at the campus are one of our biggest safety concerns. We have cars that serpentine around the middle school while the middle school is in session. That's a safety issue for our middle school students. We also have cars and buses and specialized transportation that cross each other at pick off, pickup, and dismissal. Our staff members do the best job they can, but they're not police officers. They're not skilled in traffic enforcement.
Mr. Rooney, sorry to interrupt, but that is your five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
My name is Sarissa Scott. I live at three thousand Anderson Drive in Dyton. I went to one of the presentations that was open to the community. The, I know there was more, about twelve people at the second one, and there was three people at the first one. But what resonated with me after, you know, listening to everything that they had to let me know, I'm actually, I need to say first, I'm pretty involved in the schools. I went here, I live here, I teach here. I'm one of the few people that have stayed in the same program, and I've been located in three out of the five buildings. I was at Dyton Elementary for about a year and a half, and my program was transferred to Palmer River, and that's where I am currently. And I've been at the high school as well. And I've been there all the time and did not realize, because I'm not a civil engineer, I'm not, how bad it actually was. But I just want to point out a few things that resonated with me, that the structural damage that was pointed out every couple of feet, I just thought that was, you know, wear and tear. But when I had asked about it, I was told about what the basement is pretty much a crawl space, and that's how it was designed back in, I believe, nineteen fifty-three. And there's, out of all the upkeep that's been done over the years, the tubes and things that have wires and other things under the floor that have been pulling on them for years and years, I didn't know in two thousand and eight, one of the floors almost collapsed, and they had to put, I guess, a crank, or I don't know what the word for it is, underneath it to crank it up to hold it, and we're like, okay, let's not mess with it too much. Don't know if I feel too comfortable leaving that continue on with no way to fix that. And the modulators, again, were only supposed to be temporary, and they are starting to kind of come apart. And again, like many older schools, you can't just pull up tiles and fix this because there's asbestos underneath them. Again, the presentation does have a part in there that I think everyone here should see about what happens if we do nothing. It's not no cost. It will end up costing us more. If we hit our one hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold, what's going to happen then? Because, you know, you can build a house and keep one wall standing type of situation. I didn't know that there's a money limit on that. So then, once we hit that money limit, we got to start updating things that don't even have a base of foundation to update them in. So that is going to cost us money, regardless of how we vote. And, you know, that's basically it. Those are a lot of the things that resonated with me. Two bathrooms for, adult bathrooms for the entire staff, you know, not having a ramp, not having a place for staff to eat. We're just overcrowded, and this process probably should have been started a long time ago. But we, we're at a point where maintenance and upkeep, they've done the best that they can. There is no more to do. The literal structure underneath it needs to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alicia Wilson, two zero four three Somerset Ave, Dyton. This isn't a question of needs and wants. This is a, this has to happen now. This school is in such disrepair, and not from lack of maintenance, like everyone has said. This is a situation where the floors are crumbling in the second-grade hallway. It is raining in the music room when it's raining outside. There is mold, asbestos, and we have children here. This is about the safety and security of our kids. I have a second grader who sits where there's a Boeing floor next to her desk. This is an immediate fix, and if something isn't done, the town will pay for it because MSBA can back us with funding. If we don't take these next steps, we don't get the next steps in the MSBA process. And if the school has to be replaced, and God forbid if something happens to a student, then there's a lawsuit, and then the town has to pay because there's a lawsuit. So this is something we really need to deeply think about, not just because of the children, which is top on my list, obviously, because I'm a parent of a child there, but also because of the fiscal responsibility of this town to make sure that we're not paying for more repairs in a school that's already failing. Thank you.
Mr. Gale, I know you've had your hand up for a minute. Right to your left.
Right here.
Jonathan Gale, twenty-two Waterford Circle. I'm coming from a couple of perspectives, and the first perspective I'm going to come with is the, as the ADA coordinator for the town, the disabilities coordinator. And I've had the opportunity to visit the school many times. What I can tell you as a disabilities coordinator, first of all, is that the building is almost one hundred percent non-compliant under the ADA standards of today. And that's not just for children, but it's for adults, and I'll get to that in a minute. With regard to the non-compliance, it starts with access to the building, walkways, no ramps. It's not possible to retrofit ramps for that building. It's not possible to make the doorways, in many cases, retrofitted for wheelchairs or for persons who have to use wide walkers, or to take out what I refer to as the large speed bumps, if you will, in the doorway, in the threshold areas. It's not possible to make that stage area retrofitted so that children and adults can use the stage area and have full access. You have floors that are uneven in the entire building. That's a hazard as it is, let alone for persons who have to use a disability, with disability, children or adults. That means all of you in this room. The walls are cracking. You can't just patch the walls because you have asbestos and you have lead. If one pipe breaks, one single pipe breaks for water damage, there is the potential that building will have to be immediately shut down because of lead and because of asbestos. You have the modules. Now, we all remember the modules were put in about five years ago with a promise they would only be there for five years. The module classrooms are sinking on one side. Therefore, the walls are starting to crack. The walls are starting to spread. If the alternative is new modules, we don't have the money for that as it stands right now. I think what I'm trying to say on this side of it is that from an ADA perspective, we couldn't make the building as it stands, literally as it stands, compliant. The cost would be too prohibitive for what the requirements are and would automatically trigger the town potentially on the hook if we don't pass this initiative this evening. And I'm not saying when we pass it, how it's going to come out in the end. That's not my determination to make. I just want everyone to understand what we're facing. From the ADA perspective, if something happens tomorrow, the town would be on the hook. We don't have the resources and the money. The school could be shut down or potentially, and I hate to say this, it could end up in receivership by the state. We would have no control. With regard to adults, I come from the perspective of a parent. My, my children are going to be out of the high school as of this year. Having said that, most of you here have either had children in the school or have children in the school. I do not understand how you could vote no for something like this. If your children were still in the school, you would probably vote yes. But because they're no longer here, you vote no. And I can understand the dollar value that it may cost some people a couple hundred dollars a year. But I ask the question, how much price tag do we pay for our children's education? What are we willing to spend? What would it have been worth to you if your kids were still in the school? The other part I come from as an adult and as a grandparent is, as an adult, there are a lot of things that schools are used for besides just our children going there. It's used for voting. Pretty soon, as the ADA coordinator, I may have to say it can't be used for voting because the floor because the floors are sinking. If people don't have access in their wheelchairs or their walkers or other devices, as an ADA coordinator, I have to say move it. That's my job. What about all the children's activities that happen on weekends that parents and grandparents go for sporting events in the gym, for other events in evenings, for other activities that the school provides? We all take advantage of those activities, and I guarantee you, you may not think you have a need or a disability now, but when you do, if that school isn't compliant, many of you who would stand here or sit here and vote no will be the first ones to complain. Thank you.
My name is Robert Perry, 1531 Stanzion Drive in North Dyson. And Mr. Gale, so well put, thank you for saying that. Matter of full disclosure, I'm a resident, I attended Dyson Elementary School first through fifth grade, and my youngest grandson is there now. I am a member of this school building committee, and I am a civil engineer through training and practice. I was licensed in several states and in Massachusetts until I retired. So I'm going to comment very briefly from those perspectives. As a civil engineer, I looked at the modular classrooms. One was placed on a parking lot, a paved parking lot, the other on grass slash soil. The one on the grass and soil is sinking, okay? And it's affecting the rest of the, the building structures themselves. The ceilings, walls, floors, there are cracks at the end of the corridor doorway and around the windows that allow water and weather to enter. The floors are spongy on the one that's on the soil, and the ceiling tiles separate. What you're looking at, ladies and gentlemen, if you walked through or you looked online and looked at any of the photographs, what you saw is part of a structural iceberg, if you will, because you'd say, well, we can caulk it or we can paint over it. That's caused by the real damage in the ceilings, the structural damage in the wall, and particularly the structural damage down on the floors. That's not a cosmetic fix, what you're seeing. As a committee member, the study will address questions that I have as an engineer, the condition of the structure, utilities, life expectancy, potential issues, and associated costs. And as a resident, the study will allow me to make informed decisions on how to address the known and unknown issues facing us in the elementary school. Thank you.
This is moderator, at this time I'd like to ask for a secret ballot for this vote.
At the request of Selectman Pacheco, we will take this vote by secret ballot. I will turn the meeting over to the town clerk.
Checkers, can you please close the doors and come forward with ballots, writing utensils, and envelopes?
What order, Mr. Moderator? The motion was made for a secret ballot, it's not made to close discussion.
There was a call for a vote.
I think Mr. Pacheco said we can have a secret ballot, not a call for a vote.
There was a call for a vote, and then there was a call for a secret ballot.
If we vote on a secret ballot, Mr. Moderator, or just because there was a motion, it's a secret ballot? I think we all have a vote, we want a secret ballot, not...
At the discretion of the voting body, yes, we can vote. It would be at my discretion, but if the voting body would like to vote on a secret ballot, we can do so.
So on the question of a secret ballot, Cushing's Manual is what the town follows, and Cushing's Manual doesn't have a specific rule on that, and so the general rule is that a secret ballot is at the discretion of the moderator, including whether the moderator puts it to a vote of the body, or whether the moderator basically just calls for the vote to be done by secret ballot. So it's the moderator's discretion on that. To end debate requires a, does require a vote.
So we'll continue with discussion on the motion.
Do I still have time?
Yes. But if there's other members that would like to speak.
Douglas Macedo, 861 Louise Lane. I have a daughter in Dyson Elementary School. I see the hard work and the dedication that that staff does day in and day out. They deserve it, I'm all for, absolutely for the kids, but the staff that's there, their dedication, they go in there and deplorable, horrible, despicable building that they have to work in, and they teach our youth that we'll be sitting where you're sitting one day, and we have to remember that. I understand a lot of you don't have children here, I wish there was more people here around my age, but my daughter will probably be out of the school by the time, but I want the future generation to have a place where they can learn, where they can thrive, where they can bring our town to the next level. So I think it's absolutely necessary and should have been done years ago, and I would like to see it done tomorrow. Thank you.
Eliza Kucher, 176 Center Street, and a member of the Dyson School Committee. I would just like to follow up for a moment, can I turn this around? Just like to follow up for a moment on what Mr. Rooney was discussing initially at the start of the meeting, or at the start of this discussion. I just wanted to be clear that if this feasibility study were to happen, that the MSBA does reimburse over 50% of the cost of the feasibility study. That's just an important point. Oh, I'm sorry. Is this better? I'm sorry, I just, I'll make that point again, because I think it's important that everyone understand that. To follow up with what Mr. Rooney presented initially, if this feasibility study were to pass tonight, the MSBA does reimburse over 50% of the cost of the feasibility study, and that's an important fact for everyone to have. One of the main issues also at the school is the lack of space. And due to that lack of space, teachers, administrators, the faculty and staff are forced to sometimes share space or repurpose space. And when they have to do that, and for instance, this bed secretary has to be relocated because where her office was now needs to be used for a classroom or a partial classroom, and that person is moved to a space in the office where there's a lot of goings on in the course of the day, maybe teachers coming in for mail, administrators, secretaries doing their work of the day, people coming and going, that presents another serious issue, and that is that we could be facing some issues with lack of confidentiality. And that's something that's very important to staff, students, families. And when we're doing that sharing of space and having to erect walls because there is nowhere else to go, there's no space remaining, and when that has to happen, we're jeopardizing privacy in some cases, through no fault of our own, there's just nowhere else to place people in these positions. And with that said, that in turn allows us to have a very difficult time to be able to deliver services in an effective, professional manner. So everything that's been said, the lack of space, we're not joking, we're not making this up, there is nowhere else to go. And when those enrollment numbers go up, I'm not sure where we're going to put the children. Thank you.
Nancy Gulat, 631 Great Terrace, North Dyson. I understand the needs of the school, I understand the needs that we have a lot of things in this town that we need. One of the things I think we need is to totally look at town needs. Town needs include the two schools that belong to us. They also include the fire stations, the highway department. If you want to talk deplorable, how many of you visited the highway department? Go down there when it's pouring rain, because you can take a shower and part of it, there's groundwater that comes up in there. That was part of what we were studying when I was on the board. When I left the board, it disappeared. My point is, we need to look at all town needs and prioritize them. We're looking at something for the fire department, we should be pulling things out and going in different directions. We should have a plan that includes the needs of the town. The other thing I want to mention is strictly from a financial standpoint, I understand the needs of the school. Pretty much all of my working life has been in education on the financial end of it, starting with the case here, all the way through the higher education at the state level. My biggest concern is, right now in this town, we have got two huge bond issues to pay for, and we don't have a debt exclusion to help pay for them by borrowing. We are going to be faced with some very, very difficult decisions. I hate the thought of losing town employees and town services, and I certainly cannot support taking this money out of our savings account or accounts. I will, I want to quote something that was out there. "None of the requested monies are coming from residents' property taxes, and no raising of taxes is required. The money is already saved up in the town's capital stabilization account." That's how we paid for those modulars that you're hearing about now, that are evidently not in good repair. Sounds like they weren't installed properly, but that's another issue. What I'm saying to you tonight is, you've got to focus on the town's total financial position going into the next year. It will do no good if we have a study and determine we need what we have to do, and we have no money to maintain our day-to-day town services. I think this should be delayed at least a year. This is not the first time that the state agency that funds these has made these kinds of decisions. When we replaced all the roofs on all the buildings, they refused to give money to help provide a roof for Palmer River. Said that school was in such bad shape, had to be replaced. Last time I checked, that school is still being used, it's the same vintage as the Dyson Elementary School. Towner E. Hobbit, on its own, replaced the roof, replaced the windows, and did what it had to do, because they couldn't build another school. I don't want to delay this forever, but we have got to look at the immediate future. FY26 is going to be a killer, and there's no way for us to get out of those bond payments for the Aggie School and Bristol Plymouth, even though we didn't vote for them. Thank you.
Jessica Nardozzi, 25, Sylvia Way. Much like Sarissa, who was here earlier, I graduated through the Dyson Schools, and now my children are in the Dyson Schools. I have one in second grade, and then I have one who will be in kindergarten next year. I'm also an educator at the high school, so I have a few different hats I'm wearing tonight. The other one is, I was an architect before I became a career technical teacher, and I worked on MSBA schools, so I have some information that might be helpful. I did work there just under 10 years, but the three projects that I worked on, there were always proposals for renovations, because most people think renovations are going to be the cheaper route, that's, that's the much more fiscally responsible. Turns out, that is actually the opposite. So when you renovate an old building, much like Mr. Perry was saying, the asbestos, the lead, to remove all that is so much out of the budget, so you're, you're paying so much for that, you're not even getting a new space. So I worked at, I helped construct Bay Path Regional Technical School, I did Sharon Middle School, and they were all proposing the same thing, renovate, lower cost, renovate. Turns out, feasibility study came around, they were so close. Luckily, Sharon Middle School went ahead, and they got a brand-new middle school, very small, very small difference in pay, for a brand-new school. Bay Path, on the other side, voted down the new school, they got a renovation. That ended up being more, more than a new school, to put Band-Aids on a giant crab-shaped building on the top of a hill. So the staff, the parents, the taxpayers, the kids, they got a Band-Aid of a school for more than what it would have costed for a more efficient 21st century. So we need to take advantage of this feasibility study. It's not going to be around, MSBA doesn't just come knocking on our doors again and say, hey, want a new school? It's a whole process. So if we say no, they're not going to come around again. This high school needs to be replaced too, instead, we got a roof. So my second grader's probably going to be in the same building that I graduated in. So, so what? Whatever, it is what it is. But we have the opportunity right now to do the right thing by our kids, so I think we need to do that.
Leonard Hall, 760 Main Street, Dyson. Educator of 33 years. But before I begin, we have in this town a Capitol Outlay Committee. In my experience as a selectman, is that the Capitol Outlay Committee prioritizes projects into this community. And I'd be curious by the members that are on a Capitol Outlay Committee this evening, where this project was put on the priority list. Because in the past, that Capitol Outlay recommendation was what FinCom and the Board of Selectment used to judge whether a project came for a vote or waited. So there was some thought and put in place in regards to where the Dyson Elementary School stood on the list of priorities of this town. Secondly, let us not forget, and members of the school committee know exactly what I'm talking about, over the last couple of years, E and D money, and in the discussions with FinCom and with the Board of Selectment, made it clear what they would like to see that money used for. They knew this project was coming down the pipe. That was what they expressed as a desire. Ultimately, it is up to the voters to decide. But I didn't hear any resistance at that time by members of the Board of Selectment or FinCom. This evening, we are taking a vote to create a plan. We are not voting to start construction. Creating a plan to relieve overcrowding and unsafe conditions at Dyson Elementary School. Currently, the school has a number of building, fire, and ADA code violations that have caught the notice of both MSBA and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It is not a coincidence that Dyson was moved up to the finals of the MSBA funding process, as they too have concerns. In addition to safety issues, there are a number of educational concerns that have come about, one, because of the deplorable conditions in the school, including lack of space and lack of storage. In many communities, they have been a union member for over 30 years. What the Dyson Elementary Teachers Union has been allowed to go on is, speaks volumes of those teachers and their patients. In addition to safety issues, there are, there are special education issues. Their calming room is far from adequate, does not meet the standards of a 21st century sensory special ed room. Bare minimum does not adequately serve our children, nor does a special ed classroom filled with supplies, because there is no room for those supplies. A feasibility study not, does not necessarily mean a new school. It means we look at the necessity of either a new school, remodeling the current school, or a remodel addition. There is also no... There is also no set timeline for the building process to be done with the planning process that will take more than a year. This vote approves the use of funds to plan for a future project that we all agree needs to be addressed. It does not impact the current tax rate, and will have no impact on that tax rate for at least two years. And again, that's only if the voters choose to take action at that time. Thank you.
I'd like to address the comments about the fire station. The fire station is currently going through a feasibility study. They are being considered. Since those trails have been put in elementary school, the school has received nothing. As a fairly newcomer to our town, if you simply look up Dayton, how many newspaper articles have there been about our schools? There is no doubt that that elementary school is one of our biggest black eyes in town. Since those trails have been put in, we've had many Boards of Selectmen come and go, many school committee members come and go. We have so many smart people in town. However, thank goodness for this administration for putting this on the table. It's the only thing that's been put on the table. So, if we kick it down the road, what better options are there? This one here is reimbursed by the state at 55.6%. Next year, whatever we find will not be reimbursed at 55.6%, I can guarantee that. And again, we're asking for a feasibility study. So, as Leonard Hall eloquently said, we're looking at all the options. We're looking at renovating our school, renovating it and adding on perhaps a new school, or the do-nothing cost. And the do-nothing cost will cost us in the end, because if we do nothing, roofs still need repairs, tiles need to be replaced, and the structures need to be fixed. And if we lose this opportunity, which is finally here, after years and years and years of discussing it, and it's finally on the table, if we lose it, the cost to us will be 100%. There will be no reimbursements, there'll be no state aid. Now is the time to support the schools. Thank you.
Sir, if you'd like to ask a question, you can come up on the discussion after this gentleman speaks.
Kevin De Silva, 340 Gray Terrace. It's easy to say, "It's not my problem," right? Nobody wants to spend money. This needs to be done. I have a third grader in this school, and water came through the ceiling in his classroom while he was in it. It is an absolute disservice to the students and any other parent that plans to move to this city to not do anything about these schools. I get it, it's expensive. It's going to be expensive. They want to reimburse us half the money. That's taxes we already paid. Get the money back. At least you know what it got spent on. You have to do this kind of thing. It has to be done. I get it, we need fire stations. We need all kinds of stuff, but these children need us as responsible adults to take care of them. So, take care of the children and the future children that want to come to this town. Thank you.
Mr. White, hold on, we still have more people in the room. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, I'd like to point out that I think, what kind of a day is it when I am in absolute agreement with Nancy Goulart? I'm going to try to talk quick, because I don't want to go over the five minutes, I got a lot to talk about. First of all, I want to talk about MSBA. We know, we've all seen what MSBA does. There is going to be no addition opportunity, there's going to be no renovation opportunity. The only thing they're going to tell us, as other people have actually stated here tonight, oh, it's going to be told that renovating is going to be more expensive than a new school, even though we know that they've inflated the numbers. If we go forward with this, the one thing that's going to be pushed down our throat is $100 million new school, and they're going to say, "Oh, we're going to get $50 million from the state," or whatever. I can tell you, this just happened to Berkeley. Their taxes went up by $1,200. This is just reported in the Gazette the other day. Now, if we all want our taxes to go up by $1,200, you've got an extra $1,200 laying around, great, let's vote for this. But the problem is, that this town has no stomach for any debt exclusions. We just saw this happen last week at the election. We got no approval for debt exclusions for the stuff we've already spent. We could go forward with this and say, "Let's do this study, and then we're going to go, we're going to need a debt exclusion," and it's going to fail. We might as well just light this money on fire, because this school, a brand-new $100 million school, is never going to be passed by this town. It's common sense. We need, sir, I agree, the conditions at the school need to be addressed, but we can do it ourselves, we can renovate, we can put on an addition, we don't need to spend $1 million for a study. Other things I want to say is that, they're saying the capital stabilization account, we're going to empty our savings account to do this. It's my understanding, that's going to severely affect our bond rating. So, that's another issue that we have to address. The other question I would have, Mr. Moderator, are we going to have a secret ballot on this or not?
We'll take it to a vote.
Take it to a vote. Do I need to make a motion, or no?
After discussion, we can address that after discussion.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, my kids went to this school, to the elementary school, and when I walked in there, when my son was in first grade, I was a little taken back, and that was 25 years ago. It's unfortunate that Bristol Aggie, BP, all came at the same time. Those schools are over 50 years old. We got our money's worth from those institutions, from those campuses. This school, as Mr. Perry said, is some 70 years old. We got our money's worth. These kids need to be protected. It really is sad. We see it on the news, you know, there's other places in the country that have water issues and these kinds of issues, and I watch the news, and I'm astonished that in America these things happen. It shouldn't happen in Dayton. I know we need a fire station, and we're going to get one. We need a highway department, and we're going to get one. We got a new police station. We've always been very creative here in town, the way we spend our money, and the way we do things, and how we go about our business. We've had good leaders since I've been here for the last 30-plus years. We have to give ourselves more credit, not just say, "Oh, you know, we're not going to get this, or we're not going to get that, or our taxes are going to go up $1,200, or they're going to go up all kinds of crazy." Don't put the fear into people. Let's be, let's roll our sleeves up and be creative in how we can do these things, and do them right. It's for the kids. I'm in favor of this. We cannot walk away from $600,000. We're talking about all the money that we're spending. We're not going to walk away from $600,000. We're going to get reimbursed. Sometimes you need to spend a little to get a little. I mean, if we're fiscally responsible, let's not walk away from 600 grand. Let's do this feasibility study. By the time we finish this study, it could be another year and a half or two years. By the time you even start construction, you could be looking at three, four, or five years out. This is the start of something, which probably should have been started 10 or 15 years ago. So, you know, what's the school going to be like in another four years, in another two years, in another five years? This is urgent. This is very urgent, and we should do it for the children.
Melissa Babbie, 1241 Smith Street. I am just here as a parent. Both my children, well, the one's in middle school now, the other one's in the elementary school now, and I can't tell you how disappointed I am in this school. I see every day, I volunteer a lot in the school, so I see, I'm there a good chunk of the time, and I see all these teachers, I see the admins, they're trying their best to do what they can with the school, but there's just no room, there's no place, there's nothing to do. You can't fix structural damage. You can't put a Band-Aid on it. This school is, had its life. I don't know what else to say to this. Did anybody go to the open house? There was two of them. There was so much information there, so much. But, you know, you sit here and you say that, "We don't need this." Yes, I understand, everything is broken right now. I get it, we're all broken, but this school cannot wait another year, two years, three years, four years. I kid you not, when I say, those floors are spongy, the walls are coming down, there is no room here. What's going to happen is, we're going to get lawsuits if those walls start coming down, and those kids start to die because walls come down. That's a big old lawsuit, nobody wants here. If those floors, if the kid goes through them, what do you think's going to happen? That's a lawsuit. There is no room for error here. We need a new school. Do we want to pay for it? No, nobody wants to spend money. We already said that. Nobody wants to spend the money, but we have to. We have to spend this money, because we are the adults here. These children do not have a say. We are their say. So, let's be their say.
I've heard all of the things from former students, from teachers, and it's obvious that there are things that need to be done, but I just want everyone to be realizing that we're going to spend, one point was asked for was 1.3 million, we cut it down to 1.2 million, and all of the things that we're addressing are not going to be fixed. This just pays for a study. Now, you already know that the town has other bills and other obligations, and we're going to be staring at larger bills for the BP and for the Bristol Aggie. And this 1.2 million is not going to fix the floor, it's not going to stop the leak, it's going to give us a study, it's going to give us recommendations. We could be using some money that we've already put aside in the capital stabilization account to address some of these things, so that we don't have lawsuits, without spending 1.2 million. That gives us a study that doesn't actually fix the problem. So, I just want you to weigh that up in your mind, when you're trying to balance a budget, take care of these issues for the kids, is this money going to actually stop the water coming in from the ceiling? Not today, and our reimbursement doesn't come for maybe a year or two. So, if it's urgent, consider that when you decide how you want to vote on this. And I think it was a good point to make, that we did not approve the debt exclusion for the two school districts that our kids go to, and we're going to be paying for that out of our regular operating budget. It's very likely you'd see a tax increase, or other departments cut. So, you know, you've got to kind of take care of the four walls that you have before you, as you would at your own home. So, consider that, too.
I don't know if I'm, I know someone had said, "We don't have to ask," that it would be up to you, the moderator. If, I'm hearing a lot of people, there was about 12, like 15 people that had gone, I don't know who is here out of those 15. Could we give Superintendent Rooney another five minutes to quickly try to finish? Because there's a lot of, are we not allowed to do that? Because it seems like there's a lot of people just hearing about things for the first time here.
No, I think that would be inappropriate to give a full presentation at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Gale, has had his hand up for a while.
Mr. Moderator, I'll make this quick, I've already used probably three of my five minutes. First things first, I want people to understand, for renovations, people talk about, "Well, let's use the money for renovations." Renovations, even just simple renovations in this building could cost several million dollars. So, the $600,000 that they talk about, half the money that we might be getting back from the state, wouldn't cover many renovations at all. If anything happens in this building, anything, if a pipe breaks, if a floor has to be replaced with all the asbestos under it, that's going to trigger automatically full renovations of the building under ADA law that we don't have the money for, because that could result in tens of millions of dollars. That's the way the law works, and as an ADA coordinator, it would be my job to see that that was enforced, for better or worse. That's number one. Number two, and I'm saying this respectfully to all the people in the room, there are several people who've spoken this evening about how we shouldn't spend the money. I want to remind those same people, and this I say as a resident of the community, take off my other hat. When we talked before about needing to do things in town, the police station, the fire station, Bristol Aggie, Bristol Plymouth, so forth, what you all said of the people who are opposed to this is, "We can't do these things, because we have things coming up, including spending money on our new schools potentially, or our fully renovated schools." Now that we're talking about the process of what we have to do for an engineering study, to spend money to find out what we need to do and how we need to do it, including what the very first speaker spoke of, as to whether or not this is feasible or not, you're saying no. I do not understand how on one level you can say, "We have to focus on our new schools or our renovated schools," at other times you're here, but tonight, because you're not in favor of spending this kind of money, you can vote no. It doesn't make sense. You're not putting our children, and in many cases, your children, first. Thank you.
Motion for Caitlin Lehman to speak as well? Non-resident?
We do have one member of the voting body on the floor, we're waiting to speak, so we'll allow that first.
Jacob Stebbins, 751 Council Oakway. I think we're having the argument that's going to be had after we understand the impact of these different decisions already today. The argument of, "Do we need a school? We should renovate." The point of the study is to figure out the impact of each of those parts of the pie, right? So, everything that we're talking about after this is all hypothetical, until professionals tell us what things cost. And I just want to say that, and then also, the people that you've elected, and the people whose job it is to look at the financial picture of this town, both want this to happen. So, if you're in disagreement with them, then that's wonderful, and lively discussion is fantastic, but the point of the people up here that are recommending this to happen is to help the town move forward in a positive way. Thank you.
Second?
Motion made in seconded to have the principal of Dayton Elementary School speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. One second. I'll allow it.
How you doing? Bob Bagalini, I live on 1546 Maple Street, and I'm a product of the school system here and whatnot. So, there's just a question I'd like to ask. I'm not an expert in how schools get constructed or paid for, but a question is, is I thought a feasibility study might be needed to get money from the state eventually. So, the question is, is there a risk with not conducting the study? Especially with a lot of uncertainty with, you know, what the school department or what the DOE may look like in the future. And so, it's more of a risk question. Are we taking a risk by not? Are we taking a risk by not conducting the study? That's just my question. That's it.
Caitlin Lima, I am principal at Dyton Elementary School. Just to answer Mr. Bagalini's question, so the only risk that it can present is if you do not pass the feasibility study tonight, any costs moving forward are gonna be 100% on the town. Yep, and if it is declined today, so if it doesn't pass, you don't pass the feasibility study, it'll be a minimum of four years that this could even come up again. So, no matter what, you'll be 100% liable for all of the costs within the next four years. And another thing, just to pick up where Mr. Rooney was, so from the feasibility study, there will be four options. So you do have a renovation, you have a half renovation, half new option, they'll do a completely new construction option, and then you can have the choice to go forward with not doing anything at all. And just one other thing, where people are saying, you know, $600,000, $700,000, so if we do get the feasibility for the 1.2, the town will be liable for the 532,000, cause you'll get the 55.6% back. Thank you.
Motion made for secret ballot. We have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. I will just take, before we take the vote, we do have one person stand up that wanna under discussion before we proceed.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ruth Texera. I live on 890 Oak Street in Dyton. My children, sons have gone through the school system here. We're very pleased with our school system. It was one of our reasons for choosing this town. I wanna remind you that as people look at, when you're looking where to live, one of the prime reasons you live is what the school systems are like. So keep that in mind if you have a school system that's deficient. That aside, I'm on the building committee, and I have just recently retired after 40 years being a structural civil engineer. And I work for the safety park system, which has a litany of old and dilapidated buildings. So lots of experience in what goes wrong when things don't go right. This last Friday, we've been talking about different options and different things that we saw, if you went to the open house, there was a bunch of pages taped to the wall that was meant to illustrate how many locations, and we stopped sort of posting them at 40 locations, but there was at least another 10 where there was basically a wrinkle in the floor. It's the only way to kinda describe it, and it looks like nothing. But I have to tell you that that wrinkle is a reflection of a defect in the floor. The floors are made up of structural concrete panels, it's a very common, very good methodology, until they're not used the way they're supposed to be used. And then they start unraveling like a sweater. What has happened is, and this is absolutely nothing to do with maintenance, okay? This is, this is when you hammer a nail in the wall and whoops, there's a pipe behind there, or there's a wire behind there, and now all of a sudden you have electrical problems. That's a very simple example of what has happened here, but what has happened is, when you design a floor system like this, you account for the live load of the kids and the books and the desks and all that stuff, and that's captured in a, in a certain quantity. And then there's the, what's called the dead load, which is the weight of the structure itself, and that's all calculated out. What is not usually calculated in, because it's not the usual approach, is six-inch cast iron pipes hanging from the underside of the floor. Now what the, what, where the left turn happened, I don't know, but what's happening is actually these point loads are underneath the floor. Although there is a remedy for this, it is incredibly complex because it's a crawl space. I went in there last Friday with a friend of mine who has experience in this also. The two of us looked around on our hands and knees in this crawl space, what we found was what should've been hangers like every 12 feet, well, some of the hangers had rusted off. So now there's like one missing, and then 12 feet that way and 12 feet that way. That load is now pulling harder on a plank that never was intended to have it to begin with. Okay? And if you went into the classroom 17, room 17, you'll see the, a really dramatic effect of it where the floor is starting to go, and you can roll a ball right down the floor. That's, those are warning signs that there's something much bigger at stake going on here. Now, I know on a day-to-day, oh, it's a little bump, doesn't look too bad, it looks a little unsightly, no big deal. Some of those cracks are now starting to go up the walls. Now this is taking on a whole nother level. There is a crack in the back hallway that's actually moving horizontally now. It's right near a door. So, yes, there are things that would rise to a critical level quick, okay? And that's, that is an urgent matter. But that's, it's like putting your hole, your fingers in the holes in the dike. It's just gonna be, okay, that pressure's gonna go from there to there, the next one is gonna drop. So just, I can't underscore what it looks like nothing of significance is significant. Now there's been two sizable repairs in the cafeteria, which has a wood floor.
That is your time. Thank you. If there's no, no other discussion, I will turn the meeting over to the town clerk.
Okay, can the checkers now come forward, please? Each voting section will receive one ballot, writing utensil, and envelope per person. Once voted, please include your ballot in the envelope. Please do not seal for sanitary reasons, please. Once completed, our checkers will come around to retrieve.
I couldn't see the flare.
Oh, yeah, that's my wife.
We only got 43.
You could probably afford one.
Yep, that's in there.
So we're, we're doing an additional one.
I couldn't see the flare.
Oh, yeah, that's my wife.
We only got 43.
You could probably afford one.
Yep, that's in there.
So we're, we're doing an additional one.
No, but we don't know.
But you don't know the topic there.
Yeah, especially this is all for her and, you know, other things.
Parks and Rec budget is pennies, pennies. It's like 25,000. It's something ridiculous. Was that three grand? Yeah, yeah, Parks and Rec budget, whole, whole annual Parks and Rec budget.
But he did open up the Revolver.
Yeah.
I wanna be able to point to you and be like, it's your fault.
Always.
I was so concerned.
But I was really caring that we don't need a special election, we please don't do a special.
We don't need a special.
No, we don't.
It's too much distraction.
We don't got time.
We don't need it.
If we don't need it.
We don't.
Right, so it's just, it's been the tradition. Yeah. It's just been the tradition to do it every year, not the same one.
I think we, I think we're just not.[1373.15]
Yeah, yeah, Parks and Rec budget, whole annual Parks and Rec budget. Yeah. I want to be able to point to you and be like, it's your fault.
But I was telling Karen that we don't need a special watch, Karen. Can we please not do this for you?
We don't need a special watch.
No, we don't.
Yes, we do. I love the special watch.
It's too much distraction. We don't got time for this.
We don't need it.
If we don't need it.
We don't.
Right, so it's just, it's been the tradition. Yeah. It's just been the tradition to do it every year, have the same one to spend.
Now, those leaders have like a yes and a no circle. Where you do fill in. I didn't see what it does. It's a slipper.
Okay, counting has been completed. I'm now going to pass over back to the Mr. Moderator, please.
This article required a two-thirds vote. Ninety-seven votes were cast, sixty-eight in favor, twenty-nine opposed. The article passes.
Okay, counting has been completed. I'm now going to pass over back to the Mr. Moderator, please.
This article required a two-thirds vote. Ninety-seven votes were cast, sixty-eight in favor, twenty-nine opposed. The article passes.
Okay, counting has been completed. I'm now going to pass over back to the Mr. Moderator, please.
This article required a two-thirds vote. Ninety-seven votes were cast, sixty-eight in favor, twenty-nine opposed. The article passes.
Okay, counting has been completed. I'm now going to pass over back to the Mr. Moderator, please.
This article required a two-thirds vote. Ninety-seven votes were cast, sixty-eight in favor, twenty-nine opposed. The article passes. Article seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate thirty-six thousand dollars to fund fiscal year 2025 personnel expenses for employees covered under the recently settled Dyton Police Officers Local 306 Collective Bargaining Agreement. The Finance Committee recommends this motion.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Selectmen recommends.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate seventeen thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars to fund fiscal year 2025 personnel expenses for employees covered under the recently settled 911 Dispatchers Mass Cop Local 502 Collective Bargaining Agreement. FinCom recommends.
Motion made and seconded.
For the Selectmen recommends.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate one hundred and thirty thousand dollars to fund fiscal year 2025 personnel expenses for employees covered under the recently settled Dyton Permanent Firefighters Association International Association of Firefighters Professional Firefighters of Massachusetts Local 4332 Collective Bargaining Agreement. FinCom recommends.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
For the Selectmen recommends.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article ten.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of nine thousand dollars to be expended by the Highway Superintendent for the purpose of no parking signs and necessary poles, hardware, and any related accessories. Finance Committee recommends.
For the Selectmen recommends, second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
Yes, just one quick question. Thank you. I think the voters should be made aware, if they don't already know, that at the previous town meeting, it was already voted to place the parking signs. So those signs have already been voted, now we're voting to pay for them.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article eleven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of ten thousand dollars to be expended by the Highway Superintendent for the repair of the Traffic Control Cabinet located at the Center Street Crosswalk in the area of Bristol County Agricultural High School. Finance Committee recommends.
Second, for the Selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twelve.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of three hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents. And three thousand five, fifty-one dollars and eight, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents to be transferred from capital stabilization for a total of seven hundred, three thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars to be expended by the Highway Superintendent to additionally fund the Pleasant Street Bridge Reconstruction Project. Finance Committee recommends.
For the Selectmen recommends, second.
Could you just repeat the amount from capital stabilization?
It'll be equal payments of three hundred fifty-one dollars, eight, what, three thousand, three hundred fifty-one thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents from each of the accounts of free cash and capital stabilization.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I made.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a reminder to, to town meeting that the purpose of, uh, the purpose of this article is to fund the completion of the engineering, uh, the engineering study, the final design for the Pleasant Street Bridge. As you know, the Pleasant Street Bridge is, uh, one hundred years old. The town received a, um, a community project funding grant from, uh, from the state. This is the obligation of the town to, uh, to provide the final design. The state will be, um, the state will be reconstructing the bridge, uh, at, and they will be funding that at two point seven five million dollars. Any questions, Mr. Highway Department Director Tom Ferry is here.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article thirteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum not to exceed four thousand dollars to be expended by the Board of Selectmen as a dollar-for-dollar match of funds raised under the direction of Dyton's 250th Anniversary for America Committee for planning, implementation, and expenses associated with Dyton's celebration of the Americas 250th Anniversary.
For the Selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee did not recommend.
Any discussion?
Good evening. I'm Pat Gales, 825 Whitmarsh Lane. This article is to, in anticipation of July 4th, 2026, the beginning of the semi-quintennial of America, and at this time, the committee is planning a reenactment and encampment which this fundraising and this article will go towards. So it's a matching article. If we raise four thousand dollars, the town will match the four thousand dollars. If we raise a thousand, they'll match a thousand. So we'd appreciate your support.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article fourteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars for the purchase of one fully-equipped administrative police vehicle, including a radio, antenna, and any other related accessories. Finance Committee recommends.
Motion to table?
Second.
Motion to table, it's been made and seconded, that's a non-discussion motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Article fifteen.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the opioid settlement stabilization account the sum of two thousand dollars to be expended by the police chief to purchase violence drug kits to be utilized as a teaching tool for the school violence drug programs.
Second.
Finance Committee recommends.
For the Selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded, this also requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article sixteen.
Alicia Wilson, 2043 Somerset Ave, Dyton, member of the CPC Committee. Mr. Moderator, the Community Preservation Committee recommends this article, and I move that the town vote to transfer eight thousand five hundred from the CPA fund balance reserved for historical resources, sources to be expended by the Community Preservation Committee for the research, presentation, and submission of the nomination to the National Register of Historical Places for the Mount Hope Finishing Company Historical District.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
Hi, Pat Gales again. The Historical Commission is putting this head ask for funding from the CPC for this. Mount Hope Company and Village is a very historic area, has lots of history to our, our town, and it would be a significant event to have it nominated for the National Register of Historic Places. When you're in a National Register Historic District, it does not place any restrictions on the property owner. It is a honorary designation only, um, so it'd be quite, quite nice to have a third National Register District here in Dyton. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article seventeen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of thirty thousand dollars to the stabilization account. Finance Committee recommends.
Second, for the Selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article eighteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of thirty thousand dollars to the capital stabilization account. Finance Committee recommends.
Second, for the Selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article nineteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of thirty thousand dollars to the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund established to cover the unfunded actual liability for retirees' health care and life insurance benefits. Finance Committee recommends.
Second, for the Selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept clause fifty-four of section five, chapter fifty-nine of Massachusetts General Laws and authorize the town to establish a minimum fair cash value required for commercial personal property counts to be taxed and further establish such minimum fair cash value at ten thousand dollars for small commercial exemptions.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Motion to table, is there a second? Motion made and seconded, that's a non-discussion motion. All those in favor on the motion to table?
No.
Opposed?
No.
Motion to table fails, we'll assume discussion under the original motion.
This motion was, uh, put together, uh, at the request of the, um, Board of Assessors working with the, uh, Business Committee that we have, um. The point being that they felt that we should be doing something to help the smaller businesses now. This is an exemption that has to be applied for each year. We have to qualify for it each year. The maximum is the ten thousand dollars. It doesn't mean that everyone that applies is going to be approved or that anyone approved is going to get the ten thousand, but the business, uh, the Industrial Development Corporation had been looking into this, and when the Board of Assessors discussed it, we, we realized that under the statute, ten thousand is the maximum. So we didn't really see any sense in coming in with a lower figure like five thousand and finding out that we should have gone with this amount. Again, ten thousand is the maximum, they've got to apply every year, it's got to come before the Board of Assessors, and it's not guaranteed it would be actually granted, but it would, it would provide additional assistance to small businesses in the hopes that it would give them some tax relief. And it's not a huge amount of money.
To provide some clarity, each application would be approved or be
It's like all
reviewed and either approved or denied by the Board of Assessors.
And it has to be done annually, like any kind of exemption that comes before the board. So it's, it's not automatic. Once you get it, you don't have it for life, uh, but again, working with the Industrial Development, uh, Committee, that's how this all came about.
Is there any other discussion? Mr. Gail, could we get our microphone to Mr. Gail, please?
Thank you. I just, I just have a couple of quick questions, so for familiarity, and perhaps, um, someone can answer my questions, I'll put the questions, I don't have a comment. My first question is, when you talk about the ten thousand dollars, is that ten thousand dollars off of an assessed value, or is that an actual ten thousand dollars credit against the tax that would be paid? There's a big difference. The second question I have with regard to that is, have you identified potentially how many small businesses this would cover? And how much of a difference this would make to our town's tax base? Thank you.
The answer to the first question is, it's an exemption. An exemption means you deduct something from. An exemption means you deduct something from, so it would be a reduction in the tax bill. The other question that you had relative to how much money or what the impact would be on the town. I don't have the numbers with me, but it was part of the discussion that we had with the Industrial Development Corporation company, I should say, excuse me, commission. And it would not have a significant impact if everybody who applied was granted an exemption.
Thank you. Bob Perry, again, is he on drive? I don't Gales, first question, because you said it comes off the tax bill. Does it come off the assessment of the property, the business property? Or does it come off the tax bill owed by the small business? You didn't address that question. You just said it came off the tax bill. Which aspect of the tax bill?
If you apply for an exemption for any reason through the Board of Assessors, regardless of what it is, if it is granted, that amount of money that is granted to you reduces your tax bill. You, the individual. That's what an exemption is.
Is there any other discussion?
There's a hand up. Mr.?
Wait for the microphone, please.
David Carpenter, 1595 Williams Street, Dyton. The article, the wording in the article seems to indicate that the $10,000 is an exemption toward the valuation of the property to be taxed. That was my question as well. Is that correct? So basically, if you have $100,000 in business property and the full amount of the exemption, does it make it $90,000 of business property that gets taxed? Or is this a $10,000 tax break? That's the question.
No. The reason this was brought forward is because we have a number of really small businesses. Home-based businesses. Maybe office operations, maybe a hairdresser, things like that. And that exemption, if they apply, is granted. Could make them tax exempt for that personal property. And we're only talking personal property. We're not talking anything else. Okay? So it really depends on what it is they apply for.
Mr. Moderator, based on what we're hearing and also what we're not hearing, because we don't have figures to work with, I'm asking potentially for reconsideration on a vote to table.
Reconsideration of a vote?
All he has to do is make the motion to table again. He can try that. You don't reconsider that. All he has to do, anyone he has to do now is make a motion to table again. And if it's seconded, it goes to the vote. You don't have to reconsider a table.
I'll do it that way as well.
Second.
So a motion to table has been made and it has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's a final, that's Oh, I'm sorry. Ray Hague, 112 is not of my opinion. It's not available for reconsideration. It's a final act.
Historically speaking, there was a motion made to table that failed, which means discussion continues.
Correct.
So discussion continues until somebody either moves the question or there's no more discussion, or somebody moves to table again. This was a whole new motion to table.
I am in complete agreement.
All right. So Cushing's manual indicates that when a motion to lay on the table is decided in the negative, the business before the assembly proceeds as if the motion had not been made, so the discussion continues. The motion may be renewed after such progress in the consideration of the main question as makes a motion to lay it on the table a materially different proposition from that previously rejected. So that means that once a motion to lay on the table fails in this continued discussion, it can be renewed again at a later part of the discussion. So it would be in order.
Thank you. So Article 20 is tabled. Article 21?
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 21 be tabled.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to table passes unanimously. Article 22.
Mr. Moderator, I'd make a motion to see if the town will vote to accept Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22J is added by Section 23 of Chapter 178 of the Acts of 2024, an act honoring, empowering, and recognizing our service members and veterans.
Second. Boydas selectman recommends.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article 23.
Good evening, Paul Reynolds, 725 Main Street. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws by adding a new article, tax title payment agreement bylaw, as outlined in Article 23 of the special town meeting warrant of November 14, 2024.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everybody. Paul Reynolds, 725 Main Street, and treasurer collector of the town of Dyton. Presenting this bylaw proposal to you tonight for several reasons. The first is in response to a recent Supreme Court case and resulting changes to state law regarding tax title foreclosures and tax possession properties. As wrong as it sounds and feels, equity theft has long been the law of the land in Massachusetts. By that, I mean that if a taxpayer is delinquent on taxes and is foreclosed on, and that property is later sold at public auction, the town previously was entitled to 100% of the proceeds of the sale, even if those proceeds were greater than the outstanding debt. Over the years, media outlets have reported tragic cases where someone with a few thousand dollars in outstanding tax debt loses out on hundreds of thousands of dollars in equity when the property goes to auction. I'm pleased to say that as of November 1st of this month of this year, the law has changed and equity theft has been outlawed in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Municipalities now have a duty to swiftly decide whether to retain or sell a property, obtain an appraisal, and sell tax possessions with a realtor as opposed to public auction. Municipalities can even potentially be liable for damages to former owners for failing to sell a property for a sufficiently high price. Suffice it to say, this is a time when the town of Dyton does not want to be in the property management business. Also, Dyton never formally adopted Mass. General Law, Chapter 60, Section 62A, which deals with tax title payment agreements. Under the law, towns have the ability to adopt local bylaws like this one that allow for structured payoff terms and waivers of portion of the interest on tax title balances. Most importantly for residents, these agreements also provide binding legal protection that prevents the treasurer from initiating foreclosure. Since before my time in office and continuing to the present, the town has offered payment plans to residents for many years. However, these are informal, non-binding arrangements that do not give true protection to taxpayers, and the town could choose to initiate foreclosure at any time. I am of the belief that my office is not a policymaking one. I'm not a chief executive, and I absolutely must not be in the position of choosing winners and losers, especially in a matter as critically important as who gets foreclosed and who doesn't. The appearance of discrimination can be just as damaging to the public trust as actual discrimination, and every resident deserves to be treated in a way that is transparent, equitable, respectful, and fair. For that reason, we crafted this bylaw with deliberate language to remove the potential for disparate treatment by requiring the treasurer to enter into payment arrangements with any qualified taxpayer who wants one. The goals of this bylaw are to reduce our outstanding receivables, restore delinquent properties to where they're contributing to town coffers, prevent properties from falling into disuse and disrepair, and ensure a level playing field where residents feel respected and have the peace of mind of knowing that there is one set rule, one set of rules for everybody. I believe that this bylaw is written as both fiscally responsible as well as socially compassionate, and I ask you tonight for your support. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 24.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the section of the Town of Dyton bylaws named Conservation Bylaw on pages 19 to 23 is presented in Article 24 of the special town meeting warrant of November 14, 2024 by deleting the words with strike-throughs and adding the language which is underlined in bold print.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
May I, Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Moderator, move minor amendment, page 8, 5, coordination of other boards. My amendment is that where it says, starting with the underscored and highlighted Selectmen Planning Board, Board of Health, Building Inspector, that stormwater committee be inserted before and highway superintendent. The reason for the suggested amendment is that the stormwater committee works very closely with the Conservation Commission, and this way, we would know which possible cases would involve stormwater. Right now, we have to wait for somebody to notify us, but this would kind of bring things together.
Let's pause, because you made a motion to amend with the language. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded.
Sorry. So this would just further coordinate this all together. We all work together now anyhow. But since this is a bylaw change, that's my request, that we insert stormwater committee before and highway superintendent.
All right, so just for clarification, under section 5, coordination with other boards, it shall read, "Any person filing an application with the commission shall provide a copy at the same time by certified mail or hand-delivered to the Selectmen Planning Board, Board of Health, Building Inspector, Stormwater Committee, and Highway Superintendent."
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. We'll be voting on the amendment first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to amend passes. We'll go back to the original. Is there any discussion on the original motion for the bylaw change?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Reynolds, 725 Main Street, and member of the Conservation Commission. Conservation is a unique department in the town government. In addition to enforcing the Wetland Protection Act and Conservation Bylaw, the Conservation Commission is also named as an administering authority for the town's stormwater regulations. We're a resource-heavy town with a lot of wetlands, as I'm sure many of you know. The town has many proposed, potential, and ongoing projects of various sizes that require different levels of oversight and a variety of violations and enforcement measures that we continue to work with applicants and residents on. We're also one of the most sparsely staffed departments in the town of Dyton. The department is comprised of one part-time conservation agent and five unpaid volunteers from the community. That's not a complaint. I'm proud of the work that we do in spite of our limited resources. But it does highlight the scope of our task relative to the resources available to complete it. The changes we're proposing are based on best practices in other towns with well-established conservation policies and procedures with modifications based on conditions specific to Dyton. High-level changes include increased buffer zone distances for rivers, streams, creeks, and other tributaries to public water supplies. It establishes a fee schedule, which helps to ensure that the people paying for conservation services are the ones using those services. I favor a fee model when, where possible, services are funded or partially funded by residents who utilize them. This keeps you as a taxpayer from paying for things that you don't use. The changes increase departmental communication, increase protections for vernal pools, codify standards for burden of proof and moving forwards so applicants have a clear roadmap of their rights, responsibilities, and expectations. And we created some common sense exemptions to make the permitting process more efficient. We carved out exemptions for activities like replacement of existing septic tanks, public utility infrastructure like power lines and telephone poles, and created a commercial agricultural exemption to support local farmers. Protecting wetlands means protecting drinking water supply and safely managing stormwater runoff. These changes will help us to be better stewards of your resource areas while making the permitting process clearer and easier to navigate. Thank you for your time, and I respectfully ask for your consideration of these changes.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Article 25.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Dyton general bylaws by adding a new bylaw to establish designated school zone in the area of the Bristol County Agricultural High School as outlined in Article 25 of the special town meeting warrant of November 14, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Boydas selectman recommends.
Move another minor amendment, page 16, section 7. Effective date, the bylaw shall take effect upon approval by the amendment is Board of Selectmen. We don't have a select board. So change select board to Board of Selectmen, please.
Motion to amend. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to amend passes. Now back to the original motion. Is there any discussion on the original motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 26.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 40, Section 58, to authorize a municipal charges lien on real property located within the town for certain town charges, namely, any charge payable to the town resulting from fines issued by the Conservation Commission under the Conservation Bylaw or Wetland Protection Act, GL, Chapter 131, Section 40, and Regulations Here Under, 310 CMR 10.00.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Boydas selectman recommends.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I promise this is the last time that you will hear from me tonight, then I'm done. So I'm hoping to hear community feedback on this one as well, because I understand that this can be a contentious issue or things that folks might have questions about. And I'm hoping that we have a community dialogue on it, because I think it's an important discussion for us to have as a town. What this provision, General Law, does is allows outstanding municipal charges that are unpaid as of the end of the fiscal year to be added to the Q3 and Q4 tax bills of the following fiscal year. So when you hear about a lienable municipal charge, that's essentially what that means, is that if it was outstanding and owed at the end of the previous year, it can be added to the tax bill the following year. The town adopted this provision of law The town adopted this provision of law many years ago, but the law states that every type of charge to be added to the bill in this way needs to have its own independent approval at town meeting. So we currently do this for unpaid sewer charges, Title V betterments, and demolition liens. And I'm asking you tonight to consider adding conservation fines to that list. I'll explain why. The commission sees fines as an absolute last resort. The Concom does not witness a violation and then begin issuing fines. When enforcement action is required, it starts with a respectful conversation, a phone call, a visit, a letter, a drop-in, a request to come to one of our upcoming meetings. And we understand the importance of working with people and being respectful and compassionate. And fortunately, this works the large majority of the time. I'd estimate that ninety-five percent of issues are a matter of a good faith mistake from somebody who didn't have any intention of doing anything wrong and are typically rectified without too much time, expense, or pain. Sadly, that's not always the case. We have had instances where we can go a year or more without any meaningful response by someone who has a violation on their property. There have, there have been instances where some individuals have persisted in activities in resource areas even after being notified that this would be a violation. So the question becomes, when the rare occasion occurs when someone is truly not responding to us or otherwise exhibits absolutely no intention of complying whatsoever, then what do we do about it? Bear in mind that by the time we get to this point, there have usually been numerous site visits, certified letters, permitting and compliance team meetings, and more about this situation. When fines are finally issued, they're delivered by constable, and all of this is being paid for by you, the taxpayer. And unfortunately, if a resident decides they're not going to comply, also decides that they're simply not going to pay the fine, what do we do about it? And that's the question that I'm posing to, to the town tonight. If somebody gets to the point, it's not strike one or strike two when the commission issues fines. It's, it's many, you've been out many times by the time we issue fines. And if somebody completely is going to disregard those, what do we do about it? Adding them to the tax bill is the best way to ensure that they're paid. And I don't want to see residents who didn't violate a resource area forced to pay for the enforcement actions against somebody who did. I don't think that's right. I don't think it's fair. And a yes vote for this article will help us to prevent that from happening in the future. Thank you for your consideration.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Article twenty-seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, chapter thirty-three, section fifty-nine, which provides that town employees serving in the armed forces of the Commonwealth or a reserve component of the armed forces of the United States shall be entitled to receive pay without loss of ordinary remuneration, certain pay and benefits as public employees during service in the uniformed service.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
My question to this is, it does not state, is this receive full pay? Or is this, if they are paid in their service duty, is this to bring them up to full pay of what they normally get?
I'm not sure which department proposed this. Are you, do you know? Okay, thank you.
Within the, within the police contract, they already have a provision that it's less the military pay.
Okay.
And then I discussed it with our legal counsel, and they suggested adopting this MGL to cover us additionally.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-eight.
Motion to dissolve.
Motion made and seconded to dissolve. All those in favor?
Aye.